I've turned my mic on here. All right. A roll call, please.
Chris Bruin.
Here.
Adam Carson.
Here.
Linda Hoak.
Here.
Lindsey Kaisman.
Here.
Ray Lepinis.
Here.
Amy Rath.
Here.
John Reidert.
Here.
Carolyn Schofield.
Here.
Connie Maschini.
Here. Public comment. We have Suzanne Hoben. If you want to come up to the microphone and you have three minutes to state whatever you want to say. Anything you want to say Suzanne.
Thank you. I know that these last few weeks have been pretty challenging for everybody. You as well as the providers. And now you're tasked with finding an executive director to fill this seat. And you're going to be looking for someone who is wholly committed to the community, wholly understands the needs of the providers, as well as the needs and the challenges that our patients and our clients face. And that's going to be tough. And clearly, I am not privy to everything that goes on. I would like to be, but I'm not. But, yeah, you know what? Yeah. I got a date. But I really want to use this time to publicly acknowledge and thank Leo for her years of service. I knew Leo back when she was a nurse at Centegra and worked and sat on network council with me. And I saw her dedication and I saw her commitment and I saw her bigger vision. And I feel like she brought that very much and I was so thrilled when she came back to the county. Because as a provider, I felt heard. I felt that the needs of my clients were being acknowledged and addressed. And I feel that she was a strong and fierce, and I will say fierce, advocate for our constituents and our clients and our agencies. And I am certain that all of the discussions were very tough. I don't envy you. But I really wanted to publicly and clearly acknowledge the work that Leo did, the exceptional presence that she brought, the professionalism she brought, and the ability to understand both sides of the funder and the fundee. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to do public comment? Okay. With moving right along, I need an approval of the minutes for March 25th and April 15th.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Second. Roll call. Or we can just voice? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Then we want, there is no presentation, so we'll move on to my report. For those that haven't filled out their statement of economic interest, this is just a reminder. And the Mental Health Town Hall will be May 8th here from 5:00 to 7:00. I will not be able to be here on Thursday, letting the board know I'm having my hip replaced. I'm not looking forward to it, but they tell me I'll be out of commission for a couple weeks. I'll be by phone. I'll be watching the town hall and Ray is going to run the welcoming and stuff of the town hall. And then I do need, we've had people step forward, in June, we have election for new board members. And July, they take place. So, in June, I will be running my last meeting. And I will probably apply again, and I know that Ray has mentioned that he's going to apply again, so we may have both of us back. But that's up to the county board. I'm not going to go through all the training and educational opportunities. You can look at them, they're in your pocket, board packet. Operational report is the newest report that we have, and it's in your packet. We've asked the three major players in our mental health staff to do a report each month. Since we don't have an executive director's report, we'll have an operational report. Do any of you want to say anything on the report or just read the report? Just read the report? Okay. So then I'll go, if there's no questions on the operational report, and it is in your packet, we'll move to Lindsey on finance and audit.
Okay, we did have our finance and audit committee meeting right before the meeting last week. Just covering a variety of topics related to fiscal year '26 budget approval, and some of those things got moved forward to a discussion point later for us today. Are there any other questions on the reports in the last week? Seeing none, I will pass on.
Okay. Then we go on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items A, 6A through 6C as listed on the agenda? Need a motion to approve it first?
I'll make that motion approved. Consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? And we do need a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll vote on here. Okay. Has everybody voted?
Yes. Let's touch the screen. Then you need to vote.
Okay, everybody's voted yes. So now we'll move on to O Business. The executive director job description, which I think you have in your packet. Discussion on it? I think we tried to include everything anybody said on it, so we do need a motion to approve that, so could I have a motion to approve that job description?
I should go for the job description.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, Linda? Okay, so now we need to vote on that. It should come up.
There.
Ah, okay. All right. That passed, our new job description. So, the new business now, it's for discussion only, I'm just going to throw it out there. And looking at different things, CARF accreditation. When Lindsey and I went to Springfield, I talked to a few other agencies on mental health boards. They are not CARF accredited. It costs about $10,000, I believe, every three years. Karen, am I correct? And lots and lots of staff time. We're not going to vote on it tonight, but I'd like discussion if you think that that's what we should do. It does cost money, it does take a lot of staff time. I know Karen says a lot of her staff time. And it's coming up, that we would have to have another survey. We were surveyed and had three years accreditation, but we are a funder, we're not an agency, so I'm throwing it out for discussion. Close that. Ray?
I have a question. During our last meeting, it was brought up that if we stop with accreditation, then we want to re-accreditate. Will there be an extra cost to that? Did we ever get an answer?
Karen?
Yeah, and that was actually in the operational report. I did check with CARF and there is not an additional fee, so it's still the standard. We purchase the standards manual, we pay for the application, and then we pay for the surveyors. Right now, we have two surveyors across two years. I don't know if that would change. It wouldn't matter if we're re-accredited or stopping accreditation and then applying again. So, but yeah, there should be no additional charges.
Thank you.
Adam? Trying to get you on there. Yeah?
All right. So I guess it comes down to figuring out, is it beneficial for the organization to have this? $10,000 is a lot of money. We could probably put that money other places throughout county, building improvements, whatever we're looking to do. I think we just need to analyze, what benefit does that? Since no other mental health board has this, and they commented when they were here that they have never had that before too. So it's just a matter of determining, is this something we want to continue to do this and maintain this certification? I don't know if we're the only one, are we setting the standard for the rest of the state? Is that something that we're leading the way in doing? Or is this, $10,000 is the cost to us? You can break it down, how many staff hours it is to do everything else. And then it also takes its incumbent upon board members being here too during that time as well. So I just think we needed to figure out, I mean, we can easily poll and figure out is that something that's worth doing, or figuring out if we can reallocate this time and effort somewhere else.
Okay, Carolyn, I'm trying to bring you up here next.
Thanks. And I apologize if you've answered this. I know you said it takes a lot of hours and you didn't have exactly how many hours at that point, but when do you, and I know it's for the budget, so we can include it in the budget, but I'm just, when do you really start the preparations and, I mean, or is it just kind of an ongoing process because it's a process by which, but I would assume a lot of that you would continue to do anyways? So when does it really start? I mean, you see it expires 10/31 of 2026, so when does that process really start?
Sure. Yeah. Best practice, we're continuing those efforts throughout all three years. It becomes a little bit extra work when we have to do the application. In addition to providing our details for the application, we also have to hound our providers a little bit to give us some updated information as well. So that takes quite a bit of time, just making sure we have all the documents, all the paperwork, all the details for that. And then also just preparing those documents for the surveyors. We had to upload many documents into their portal in addition to having paper binders available for them during that survey. So, yeah, there was a lot of, outside of typical work hours spent on that, just making sure that we're ready and prepared for it. And then we also have the surveyors go and meet with several of our providers. We have to set up those meetings in those times as well, so it's quite a bit of effort. But yes, we do, we were driven by policies anyway, so even if we didn't do CARF, we would still adhere to our policies, so a lot of those things would still continue.
And does it overlap, timing wise, I was looking, is it overlap with the allocation process? Because I know it's kind of close to that same time.
Yeah. We were a little nervous the last time because they were planning to potentially come in August, but fortunately, they have allowed us to let them know when our blockout dates are. So we try very heavily to protect that time period. But yeah, it was in October, and yes, that was when the board was making the final decisions for allocations.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, and one more question I just was thinking of, and you don't have to answer it if you want to mull it over, but do you have any kind of opinion one way or the other? Like, do you find a significant value in it, or do you find it kind of more a process? And I'm just curious in your personal opinion on it, if you find it beneficial or not?
I can give you kind of like a short answer. Yes, anytime we have to do extra things, it's challenging, of course. The nice part about being accredited is we can say we are audited by an outside party that looks at our business practices as well. So there's kind of that nice piece to say, okay, we know we're doing a good job, and here's someone else who's telling us we're also doing a good job.
Okay. If you think of any more, feel free to reach out and give me further insight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Linda?
I have a couple of questions. Does the CARF accreditation that we got cover the providers, or are the providers accredited separately? And are they all covered or accredited or not?
Most of the agencies are accredited by CARF.
Okay. So there was no like discount or benefit for them by us getting accredited?
No.
Okay.
It was just, I think originally, this is my history with the board, it was like what Karen's saying, we were just given, hey, our stuff was looked at and we got a stamp of approval for it. But most agencies, in order to get money from the state or the feds, they want the agencies to be accredited by somebody, JCO, CARF, whatever. Yeah. Any other? Oh, John, I'm sorry, I missed you. Go right on.
This was kind of the same question as Carolyn's, I guess, but it seems like this is similar to like a continuing ed. I mean, do you find benefit and new highlights of what to look for in the industry, and does this serve us? I mean, I could see, I could see this as a benefit too. Am I wrong, or, I mean, is this something we should support, or, because a continuous improvement of both organizational management, cultural competence, involvement of the persons who all is involved? Is it just you, Karen, or is it everyone?
Everyone here, all of the staff does need to be involved in that, because it's, again, business practices across the organization. So our governance standards are also looked at, so our board practices are also reviewed. As far as continuing education, so what we do with CARF accreditation, a large part of it is making sure that we're asking our providers to uphold those standards. Several of our providers are accredited already. Some of them are not accredited, and that's where we're making sure that they're upholding those standards, because we want, it impacts our network accreditation, and also it's just best practice. As far as those who are served, so our providers do get to provide feedback on what it's like to be funded by the mental health board to the surveyors, so they want that feedback as well. They also look at, what are we collecting from our providers? What are we doing to make sure that they are serving those that they serve well? What are they doing for standards, for outcomes? We've talked very heavily about outcomes and ethics and compliance, and we continue to do that. So it's making sure that we stay on top of the standards that are best practice in behavioral health. They have their very, very thick standards manual that covers, again, business practices and client-facing services.
And so just one more thing, I mean, just a thumbs up, thumbs down if you want or not. I mean, does this benefit you in your industry awareness of, I mean, I can almost see a benefit, but I don't want to dictate what you think is necessary or not either.
Sure. The good news is, even if we chose not to continue CARF accreditation, we can still access their manuals, and we can still keep on top of those standards.
Excuse me, Lindsey?
I know, I shared my opinion about this in finance committee, and I've thought about a feedback point that Chris gave about, you know, hey, do we need this? We do a lot of these practices already, and, you know, feedback that she shared was, yes, but when things become, you know, mandatory, you obey them. When they're not mandatory, things slip away. And where I sort of landed with this was, in my head, I think that's really relevant feedback, and there is nothing that stops us from making a decision to return to CARF, you know, five years from now, when our funding catches up, is a thought that I've had about this. In the bigger scheme of our budget, $10,000 isn't a lot of money, but it can be a lot of money for specific programs, and it is, for me, not necessary. We have recently gotten, you know, approval and accreditation, and our policies and procedures and practices and staff are trained and up to date on this. I think that, you know, asking for staff hours, $10,000, and asking our funded agencies and board members for their time to go towards this is something we could postpone if we really felt that there was value, or that it was something we needed to, every once in a while, have an external auditor come in and say, hey, you're up to stuff. So I am in favor of removing the CARF line item in our budget, and for, you know, continuing to uphold our, you know, strong policies and procedures and outcome measures and all the things that we already do in our ethics and compliance committee to support what I think the spirit of CARF is, I think we can continue to support. And if there's any question of that in the future, then perhaps it's something that the board considers three or five years from now.
I'm getting to you, Linda, I'm trying to get it. Okay. There you go.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Having done other accreditations but never CARF, I don't know, but my question is, do they require historical data about management? Since we have just changed our management situation, is that an issue or not with us going for accreditation?
I don't believe it is. Is it, Karen?
I don't think it's an issue. They would want to see what we've done to make sure that we're doing well through any transition period, but I would say that would be the extent of it.
You know, if you just, what I always try to keep in mind, CARF is accreditation for rehab facilities. And the reason many agencies such as, I'll just say Pioneer, have to have it because their funding of state funding and different, is dependent on being accredited. I always try to think, we are a funder, it's nice, but $10,000 to an agency might mean quite a bit at this time. That's my opinion. But this was just for discussion, it was not to make a vote tonight, it's just to think about it. But at some point, we're going to have to make a decision. Oh, Ray, I'm sorry.
Probably, unfortunately for all of you, I'm probably the only board member that has had to go through CARF accreditation for the epilepsy foundation when I was with them. Karen, what might be helpful is before the next board meeting, if you could bring the binder, did you have to prepare for them?
Binders.
Binders. And that might just for the board members to just thumb through and go see the level of work that has to be done.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? It was just for discussion. Because as I'm going through things and spending a lot of time here, I'm reading the Community Mental Health Act inside and out, I'm looking at CARF, I'm looking at ways because, as we know, the sales tax did not meet what we thought it would be. And we really need to support, as Suzanne Hoben said, we need to support these agencies the best way we can. So, that's why I bring it up. And I will throw out one other thing that we will be looking at is our, the town hall. Just, I'm just going to throw it out there, that is what no other agency is doing in the state. They do it by adding on to the survey, the state or the county survey from the health department, they add questions, because it goes out all, excuse me, it goes out all over. And our town hall sometimes is just mainly providers or parents that have a complaint. So we want to get a lot more input. But we'll move on. Draft budget is the next one. 8B. Lindsey? Or Mel, or whoever's going to do it?
Sure. So, from finance committee, there were a couple of topics that we opened up some discussion on, and, you know, Melanie needs some direction on these topics, which included the deputy director position, the addition of the 7.5 hours to the training coordinator, I might have messed up that title, position. Further discussion on whether or not we want to intentionally hold back funds for a mid-year allocation next year. And the capital project for our own building with the bathrooms were all things that we discussed in finance committee, and at least for the bathrooms project, really wanted to kind of push that back to buildings and grounds to give us, you know, a definitive each year on what, you know, line items we need to put into the fiscal year budget and have the determinations made there. In finance, I think there was pretty healthy discussion about a deputy director position perhaps not being something we want to do in fiscal year '26, given our hunt for an executive director. And there was some consensus that the 7.5 hours added to the training coordinator position seemed to make good sense, especially given some decisions to shift marketing dollars that we've been spending and bringing some of those things in-house. So I wanted to bring all of those topics, you know, forward to the board. All of you have had the draft budget in front of you a couple of times to see if there was any further discussion on. Okay, is there any other discussion? It was just for discussion. Because as I'm going through things and spending a lot of time here, I'm reading the Community Mental Health Act inside and out, I'm looking at CARF, I'm looking at ways because, as we know, the sales tax did not meet what we thought it would be. And we really need to support, as Suzanne Hoben said, we need to support these agencies the best way we can. So that's why I bring it up. And I will throw out one other thing that we will be looking at is our, the town hall. Just, I'm just going to throw it out there, that is what no other agency is doing in the state. They do it by adding on to the survey, the state or the county survey from the health department, they add questions because it goes out all, excuse me, it goes out all over. And our town hall sometimes is just mainly providers or parents that have a complaint. So we want to get a lot more input. But we'll move on. Draft budget is the next one. 8B, Lindsay? Or Mel, or whoever's going to do it?
Sure. So from Finance Committee, there were a couple of topics that we opened up some discussion on, and, you know, Melanie needs some direction on these topics, which included the deputy director position, the addition of the 7.5 hours to the training coordinator, I might have messed up that title, position, further discussion on whether or not we want to intentionally hold back funds for a mid-year allocation next year, and the capital project for our own building with the bathrooms were all things that we discussed in Finance Committee, and at least for the bathrooms project, really wanted to kind of push that back to buildings and grounds to give us, you know, a definitive each year on what, you know, line items we need to put into the fiscal year budget and have the determinations made there. In finance, I think there was pretty healthy discussion about a deputy director position perhaps not being something we want to do in fiscal year '26, given our hunt for an executive director. And there was some consensus that the 7.5 hours added to the training coordinator position seemed to make good sense, especially given some decisions to shift marketing dollars that we've been spending and bringing some of those things in-house. So I wanted to bring all of those topics, you know, forward to the board. All of you have had the draft budget in front of you a couple of times to see if there was any further discussion on any of those topics, or any of the other fiscal year '26 items in the budget.
I have one comment on that. When I met with the county, I met with Peter Austin and Carolyn, that the county has architects, which I did not know that we are able to use. You know, we talked about getting an architect who could look at the bathrooms. Am I correct, Carolyn? They have architects, and we could use them instead of us hiring an architect. I just want to throw that out there because that's a really good asset for us, so. Okay, Carolyn. I thought I...
There you go, thanks. What, can you remind me of the timeline again, Lindsay? Is it next month that we're going to finalize in Finance, and then we'll bring it to the board?
Yes.
And then, so I have a couple of comments. First, on the mid-year allocations that we had talked about, I did talk with the county on, because I know that was one of the things, was how we would have to go back to the county board and move it. So I kind of wanted to get a little more clarity on how that's transpiring, and it would be, I think they are saying that there would need to be a resolution at the county board. However, it's more of like a pass-through resolution, I don't think we're ever going to get any, they're basically giving us that autonomy, they recognize that we do have the autonomy to make those decisions and like do the rollover, you know, whatever the unutilized funds from like 2025, we could use that as the mid-year allocations for '26, which I think, me personally, I like to see that because I would like to see us really utilize and let our providers know kind of what they'll have in the year, and then that's just kind of an added benefit of what could get rolled over rather than holding it back. I think it's better to let them know upfront the dollar amounts that they're going to have. So that would be my preference, would be to have a mid-year, but maybe adjust it later when we know what that unutilized fund is. And I think it would be an easy, easy one, I mean, I think everyone on the board would agree to it, in my opinion, but, and then the other, and the reason I ask the timeline is because I'm actually also curious, there's a lot of things we're looking at, and I think that because we do have this, the sales tax that wasn't, or we were hoping it would be, but we at the same time want to provide the same level to our providers, the same level of funding, you know, we want to optimize training, we really want to, we want to have our dollars utilized out in the community as best we can. And so I've been looking at kind of how other mental health boards around the state run as well. And I know I've harped on administrative costs a lot, and so I've been looking at that aspect, in particular opportunities for collaboration, and maybe in, I mean, we've kind of talked a lot about them, and I'd like to continue those conversations around like transportation, potentially the, looking at this building, you know, with the bathroom and the capital expenses, I mean, conversations that we've had over and over, but I'm wondering, is there a time, and I don't know the appropriate, if we do it during a Finance and Audit Committee, if we do like a special meeting, if we do it at the board meeting, but I'd really, and I don't mind doing it and putting it all kind of together, if, I don't know, Connie, if you or Lindsay would see fit, to kind of just get an idea of what others do. And like the amount, and I say it all the time, but I've never like shown it to people, you know, those administrative costs in particular, you know, that, the comparatives on that. And like the county uses 10% for, you know, when they're doing funding of grants, and the people that they're providing to, you know, 10% is kind of their max that they're using. So I'd like to kind of show it, and I'd like to maybe do this before we do this, the final draft for budget, because I don't want to introduce it a week or two later, or I mean, a month or two later, and then say, well, our budget's already set, you know, we can't, because I do think there's opportunities here, and I think we need to take advantage of some of the opportunities. So I'm throwing it out in draft budget discussion, but I guess it also kind of falls under member comments because I don't know if Connie, you want to direct later, or if anyone wants to weigh, but I do think it pertains to the draft budget and the timing of it.
I'll make some follow-up comments, just, I know as part of what Connie and I did with the ACMI meeting was trying to connect with other people, and I think Connie's made quite a bit of effort to see how other somewhat similar-sized counties are operating. And so, you know, for me, for that conversation to be useful, I don't know that I would want to compare it to, let's say, our county, you know, but I think a full comparison of three or four similar-sized mental health boards, in addition to best practices and other settings that could be similar, would make for a more fruitful conversation. I am leery that we may not have the time to do something like that in the next month without calling forth special meetings and really putting, you know, forward some effort to get the information we would need to get, which I think we, I think Connie has the contacts of probably the three or four that we would do that with. But I think it's a great, I think it's a great concept, I don't have any issue in potentially seeing where we would do that, whether it's whatever she would want to direct. And then, back to your original comment about fund balance and mid-year allocations, I'm going to take a step back and maybe explain the process that I don't think that maybe all of the board members know because they haven't been around, but what Carolyn was talking about is using this year's leftover dollars that would go back to fund balance as the specific dollar amount that we would actually use next year as a mid-year, which by default requires that we go back into our fund balance and ask for those dollars to be used in FY '26, during FY '26. We have a set of meeting that John and Brandy and I will be going to with Peter Austin Thursday, actually, to work on some of just the administrative procedures for how do we get funds moved from point A to point B. And I don't foresee that being a challenge, I think we just really have to get some sort of standard operating procedure. So especially with something like Carolyn is talking about, where, you know, at the end of FY '25, it doesn't take us that long to figure out how many dollars are left over, you know, a month or two to get the books totally clean. And really, we can go back, we can go and do whatever the new process is with the county at that point to have those dollars ready for a mid-year allocation. I don't see that being a process that would be hard, complicated whatsoever. So if that's a concept that other people like, I see, I'm in favor of that approach as well, instead of picking a specific dollar amount from the client services budget that we've set aside for FY '26, instead of, let's say, taking, I think, right now in that draft budget, I think we had taken $300,000 out to set aside. I don't think that there would be any issue with doing that process. And then every year, the mid-year allocation dollar amount would be based on what was left over in the previous year, and typically whatever our funded agencies haven't utilized within the first quarter or so before mid-year allocation. So it'll always be a moving target, always a moving number, which I don't see any problems with either. That, yeah, okay.
Chris?
Hey, so thanks for those thoughts, there was a lot to unpack in there. So all pertaining to budget, and I think first, the issue of mid-year allocations, I like historically was not a fan of these, but I came to become more aware of how difficult it was for some of our providers to project their anticipated costs, particularly like the fee-for-service situations, because they don't know how many clients, how many hours, and state reimbursement rates seem to be, you know, a constant topic. And so I came to have kind of more appreciation for the fact that they sometimes are not able to, you know, project with full information what their needs are going to be, and that historically, we've had specific providers have to come back. And the idea of using unused funds from this year to try to accommodate those needs is fine if it's going to be enough. So I think we may be able to project what our anticipated unused funds are going to be, and look at like our past couple of years of what our mid-year allocations have amounted to, and kind of say, are these numbers looking like we're going to be able to cover the potential mid-year needs based on unallocated funds? And if not, maybe we do need to be a little bit more intentional about putting some of that aside. So those are just thoughts that I had about that. And in terms of the idea of creating additional administrative efficiencies, you know, I think we're all in favor of trying to trim down administrative costs, if there's a way to do that without compromising services in order to be able to allocate more funds to services. And so it seems like, you know, Finance Committee, that could be a task that we would assign them to try to use this information that we're trying, you know, working really hard to research and integrate to present to us so we have more guidance on the potential to inform our decision-making.
I'm sorry, Lindsay.
I just wanted to make a comment too, that, you know, even if, in the example, let's say there's a particularly rough year, or high needs, or something that changed in state or federal funding, you know, at any point, it is the requirement of our board to make a decision to remove dollars from fund balance and bring them back into whatever we're going to put them towards. So for me, we could, you know, there's nothing saying that we can only use what we didn't use the year before. So, you know, as long as we have an idea of how far in advance we need to make those decisions as a board, and whatever the new procedure will be with the county board to make sure we have access to those dollars, you know, I think we're going to be able to make pretty timely decisions based on that. And once again, not that it's great to do this, but, you know, if something even happened two months later after a mid-year allocation, and it was a true emergency, and there were things going on, and we needed to make those motions, and the board decided to do that, we get to do that. So, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the only real hiccup with this is just a slight time delay, and I don't even think it'll be that big of a slight time delay. And I wish we had enough dollars for all the fee-for-service requests, but for some of them, I think there's always going to be more need than we can achieve, and if we continue to pull from fund balance in an unsustainable way, we will ultimately have a year or some point in the future that we will have to make more significant cuts to our client services budget. So the concept of using last year's leftovers essentially sort of keeps us in an ability to forecast appropriately using that other model. So I do like the approach, and just want to state that there's still the flexibility that we need in case circumstances change and we feel different at the time.
Also, I think you want a decision on the budget, whether we include the deputy director position. I mean, that has to, I mean, I think at this time, we're looking for an executive director, that we ought to pull that deputy director out of the budget. Unless somebody has a different thought, I'm going to say that could be pulled out of the budget for sure. And, I'm sorry, who am I not, oh, Melanie, I'm sorry. I sometimes don't look down, Melanie, I'm sorry. There you go.
I just want to let you know, these numbers do not include the deputy director, that has already been polled, based on the recommendations of the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other questions on the draft budget? We need to approve it, right?
No.
No, just, this is just for discussion, okay. Did you want to, did you press your little button there? Oh, you don't want to talk? Okay. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, then we'll move, we'll move along. Member comment? Do we have any members comment? Okay, Adam first?
Mine's super quick. Clean out your cabinets, is drug take-back, excuse me, this Saturday. Most police departments in the county are sponsoring a box or two, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, pass it along, get rid of all your unwanted drugs, we'll take them.
Is it just at your police station?
Most agencies have.
Okay.
Lincoln Hills has it, so please feel free to come by. I won't be there.
Okay, all right. Carolyn?
Thanks, and I didn't know if to bring this up with the draft budget discussion or member comments, so I'm doing it now. I would like to see if we could get a Building and Grounds Committee meeting, because I do think it's a big component of the draft budget, that we need to have the discussion on the bathrooms. So if we could maybe try to get that going, that would be my member comment.
Adam is the chairperson.
I can poll, I can talk to Adam for some dates, and I can do a poll.
Yeah, okay, I just think it's critical, we keep deferring to it, and it's not on there, so thank you, that would be great.
Okay, I have, I have a comment. I belong to the Rotary Club here in Crystal Lake, and tomorrow, and I don't know the exact time, but at Stearns Woods, they are putting up signs about the 988 all throughout the woods, what is that, Stearns Woods and all the areas, about call 988 if you have an emergency. So that is going to be happening tomorrow with a lot of publicity, and they said the mental health board would be there, and I'm like, boy, I didn't know that, but if any of you are planning to be there, that's nice to know, we'll get you the times. But it is tomorrow, and they are putting signs everywhere, which is sort of nice, that if you have an emergency, call 988.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I did a visit with one of our funded agencies actually today. I visited Liv for Lolly's new location in Woodstock today, so they have a physical location, which has been, I'm sorry.
I said, where is it?
It is off of Jackson Street, uh...
665.
665 Jackson Street, yeah. So it is, you know, a couple blocks from the Woodstock Square, which I think is a fantastic location. And I was aware of this a little bit, just because I share landlords, so when they were looking at the space, I got a call asking me about, you know, what I thought. And, you know, they were calling for donations for their space, and I'm really pleased to share that it was significantly larger than I thought it was going to be. Beautiful space, they've got multiple rooms for peer recovery support specialists for one-on-one meetings. They also have a really large kind of conference group room where they're planning to do some additional recovery-oriented meetings in the community, and I think it's going to be an incredible asset, and I know that we, you know, fund them and their programs in McHenry County, and, you know, they, as an organization, are spread amongst many counties in the area, and they were, I asked the question, hey, how's it going with all these funding cuts, especially with public health? Because, you know, I imagine that that might have impacted them, and Alex Matheson was there, as well as Stephanie Gaton, and, you know, kind of shared with me that the gratitude that they have for the McHenry County Mental Health Board, because a lot of their funding sources in other counties look like it could go in a direction we wouldn't want it to look, look at, but it's going to potentially impact them greatly. So I wanted to talk about that, you know, Stephanie shared some dreams and schemes for the future, even something like a living room model maybe one day. I don't want to speak for them, but really nice to see an agency that over the last, you know, couple of years has gone from super grassroots to now being a little bit more of a permanent fixture in our community, and with ideas on things that are cutting-edge that we have been talking about wanting and needing in our community for a long time. So I thought it was important that I'd speak to the progress that they're making towards all that. And trauma-informed paint colors on the wall, even though she didn't know it, but I was like, oh, trauma-informed paint colors, she's like, I don't know what that is. So it was a happy accident, but it's a great space. I think that they're going to have an open house with, at some point in the future, and I hope that more people can go check it out because it was really neat.
Thank you. Any other member comment? Well then, if not, we need a motion to go into executive session, out of regular session into executive session. into executive session. Second?
Second.
Okay. We have to have roll call on that.
Chris Brune?
Yes.
Adam Carson?
Yes.
Linda Hoak?
Yes.
Lindsey Kaisman?
Yes.
Ray Lepinis?
Yes.
Amy Rath?
Yes.
John Reiner?
Yes.
Carolyn Schofield?
Yes.
County Machini?
Yes. Have to say goodbye to the audience. Thank you for coming, and I hope to get over to 665 Jackson.